Good evening. Tonight is Monday, April 7th, and we do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. The first order of business is agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's board meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
We'll vote to approve our agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tonight's agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review tonight's agenda for us in the community?
Absolutely. Well, we're really excited because we have the boys swim team champions here, and we're going to celebrate them. We also have excellence in action. We have one of our students in the Avid program, who was just chosen for an incredible honor. We're excited to hear about that. We may have hearing from members of the public. We have quite a few items on the consent agenda. We have a couple of items for discussion, including policies. We have FY '25 budget revision for action tonight, several more policies for action, and we'll have leadership and committee updates and superintendent updates.
Great, thank you. First up, we are going, I'm going to invite Athletic Director Troy Stein up, and we are here to honor the Edina Boys Swim and Dive Team as the 2025 state champion. Gentlemen, thank you for, and your coaches for joining us.
Board Chair, excuse me, Board Chair Gable and Superintendent Dr. Stanley and the rest of the board, thank you for having us here this evening. And again, my name is Troy Stein. This is the principal.
Troy, will you pick up the microphone down there? Sorry. Just the, you're gonna have to pick up the entire.
We gotta pick up the whole thing, okay.
Just so we can hear you. Thank you, sorry.
Yes. And we are proud to recognize our boys swim and dive team, and they have earned the 208th state championship for Edina High School this year. So it was a great year, and we're gonna introduce, let's start by introducing the players. If you could just introduce yourself, your grade, the event that you participated in, whether it's what event in swimming, or if you're a diver, and then what grade you're in. And if you're a senior, let us know what your plans are for next year. And then we'll finish with our head coach, Scott Johnson, to say a few words about the team.
I'm Jerry. I'm a senior, and at State, I swam 200 IM and 500 freestyle. And this fall, I plan on continuing to swim at Princeton.
I'm George. I'm a junior, and at State, I swam the 200 free and the 100 breaststroke.
I'm Joe. I'm a, I'm also a junior. I swam the 200 freestyle and the 100 fly.
I'm Alex. I'm a sophomore, and I swam the 200 free and the 500 free.
I'm Patrick. I'm a sophomore. I swim the 50 and 100 free.
I'm Logan. I'm a junior, and I'm a captain, but I didn't swim at State.
My name is Scott Johnson. I'm a former teacher here at Edina Schools. I taught here for 29 years. I taught 7th grade health at Valley View. I just wanted to add that Jerry here, he was, he didn't give every, all of his information, but he's also a state champion in the 500 freestyle, and he was a state champion three years running. So that hasn't, nobody's done that since the 1980s. So congratulations to Jerry for that. Our state championship was the 16th championship overall for boys swimming and diving. We also had four divers participate in the state meet, and all four of them scored. That's never happened at our state meet for, for boys in the large class division either. So we were also conference champions. The 24th conference championship for Lake Conference, Classic Lake, all those different things, and our 24th section championship as well. So we're very pleased to be able to represent Edina High School and Edina Schools and the community of Edina in a positive fashion. And these gentlemen are exemplary examples of, of Edina. So congratulations to all their hard work, and we're very grateful to be able to be here and represent our school district. So thank you very much.
I'm up a little tighter. Let's take one picture. I'll get in the middle. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Boys, before you leave, board members, do you have any questions for our swimmers or coach?
I definitely do. As a former swimmer myself, I want to know today, what, what constitutes a championship time in the 200 IM?
Well, I didn't win that one. It was a 146.
146, and what about the 100 breaststroke? 53? Excellent. And the 500 that you did win?
A 1 and a 4.26.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Where'd you swim at? On Arizona.
Thank you for being here tonight. And Coach, thank you for the time that you put in in developing these young men, and to all the coaches. And that goes for you, Athletic Director Stein, as well. So, boys, if you have five minutes, I'd encourage you to stay for excellence in action, and then you can leave, because it's quite, it's quite a good excellence in action. I mean, no pressure, but.
Patrick, you can leave, it's okay.
All right. Tonight, this month's excellence in action features our advanced via, advancement via individual determination, or Avid program at Edina High School. Avid is a college preparatory elective course that exposes students to academically rigorous courses and the executive functioning training necessary for college success and beyond. We are joined tonight by Jeff Pope, Administrative Dean at Edina High School, and Marari Ferrado, a senior at the high school. Marari won an essay writing contest and was selected to share her essay with thousands of educators at this summer's Avid Summer Institute in Dallas, Texas. Marari will share her Avid journey and essay with us this evening. Welcome.
Oh, there we are. We are now live. All right. All right, so good evening, everyone. Chair Gable and Superintendent Dr. Stanley, school board members, thank you for having us here to talk about this celebratory event, and an amazing student, obviously. I'm Jeff Pope, Administrative Dean at EHS, and Marari Ferrado, our amazing Avid student. Within four short slides, as I will not be long, I will briefly give some context while we're here. And then second, and more importantly, you will hear from Marari, who will share her story and award, award-winning, five-to-seven-minute speech that was tonight. Oh, there we go. Thank you. So Avid has been, as you can see up here, the mission is to, you know, close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college career and readiness and the global, and success in the global society. Avid's been in existence since 1980, so it's been around for over 40 years. It was started in, it was started by actually a high school teacher in San Diego, California. Her name is Mary Catherine Swanson. Avid was also developed during desegregation efforts in San Diego County schools. So. So a couple of things about summer institutes. Summer institute is where most of our staff teachers get trained, where usually the program starts. They're highly effective professional learning sessions called Communities of Practice. Teachers and admin learn like promising and engaging student practices. Right now, it used to be about 30,000. Now it's up to over 40,000 educators are trained in summer institutes each year across the country. I have been one of the Avid Summer Institute facilitators since 2013. Avid speakers. Avid speakers are the highlight of summer institute. When you're at a summer institute, it's definitely not, they present during general session. You never want to miss it. And so, because those speeches, they're so powerful and impactful. They also, so each of the students, they enter this student speaker contest. And so Marari and I were talking about parking pass, and then we ended up talking about her entering this contest. So, you know, so it's kind of all worked out, right? But they receive coaching and support from Avid staff, and Marari was able to receive support not only from them, but also from EHS teachers like Ms. Taylor, who's here, and Ms. Jarrett, and Ms. Dishar. So I give them love and support right behind us over there. And they're instrumental in why we're here today. There are over 900 students that apply and enter this contest. Only 22% are actually accepted. This is nationwide. So it's a very, very exclusive group of students. There are school districts and schools who have had students apply for years and have never been accepted in the state and other parts of the country. So needless to say, it's just, it's one of those opportunities of a lifetime. As you can see up here, there are two, there are two prompts, and Marari answered one of those prompts. Usually, anywhere but about 800 words is what they usually expect. So we kind of break down to about five to seven minutes. So with that, I'm gonna get out of the way and let Marari do her thing. Just, I wanted to briefly introduce her. She is a very esteemed class of 2025, and loves math and science. Going to University of St. Thomas and is going to major in mechanical engineering. I did not major in mechanical engineering. I tried, and then I went over to sociology. So there you go. So Marari, take it away. And we're gonna move this right over here.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I am very grateful that I'm here to tell you my story with the Avid program. So I called this essay "Becoming My Own Hero." When I was a child, I believed everyone had a hidden power. For example, I suspected that the cashier possessed mathematical powers, that they could add up any items without a calculator. I imagined my superpower was solving problems with numbers. I would lie on my bed for hours, staring at the ceiling where my imaginary equations appeared in the dark. I'd add, subtract, and multiply faster than I thought was possible, challenging myself to beat the cashier. My love for math allowed me to advance to higher levels at a young age. As I entered middle school, I discovered another superpower, the ability to speak up for what I believe in. My inspiration is my mother, who often shared her dreams of becoming a lawyer to fight for women and immigrant rights with me. This motivated me to become a student who wasn't afraid to ask tough questions and discuss complex issues. High school, however, taught me an unpredictable lesson. It introduced me to one of the hardest things, the power of peer pressure. My freshman year began with grief. My grandfather passed away right before school began, and all my mother and I could do was helplessly watch through a screen as my family in Mexico grieved. Before I could fully process his death, my grandmother passed away too. I could see my mother's battle, which forced her to shut down, dimming her bond. I declined into depression, feeling useless and losing interest in everything I once loved. Desperate for support, I turned to people who seemed to offer it. And I admit, I fell into peer pressure. I started to make choices that were harmful to me and didn't reflect who I truly was. Center of it all, the loss, the feeling of losing myself, someone stepped in and planted hope without realizing it. My sophomore English teacher, Mrs. Taylor, noticed something in me that I had forgotten. She asked me if I ever considered joining Avid. I didn't even know what it was. Still, something about the way she asked me made me say yes. When junior year came around, Avid flipped the switch inside me. During our first week in Avid, we were asked to pull out our transcripts from the past two years. Staring at my GPA and my past grades, a wave of embarrassment washed over me. I saw the hard proof of how far I had failed. At that moment, I asked myself, am I going to let this define me? I realized I didn't have any of the privileges of the people I was surrounding myself with. I didn't have that financial cushion to fall back on. And if I wanted to build a life that I longed for, it was up to me to make it happen. That moment of clarity fueled my decision. I would find my superpower again. I removed negative influences of my life, people who didn't have the best interests at heart. I focused on myself, and Avid provided support that I didn't know I needed. For the first time in a long time, I was surrounded by people striving for success. Avid wasn't any class, it was a community. Ms. Jarrett, one of my Avid teachers, kept everyone on track, always checking in on us. She'd ask, hey, what's going on in whatever class, whenever our grades started slipping. It was a reminder that someone cared. And knowing that someone cared, knowing that someone held me accountable, pushed me to hold myself accountable too. I started to feel like myself again. I saw drastic change in my grades. I went from getting Ds and Cs on my tests to achieving As. I learned how to stay organized, helping me overcome my procrastination. I created goals that led me to excel and still focus on myself. I began to join activities I loved to do. I became a math teacher assistant. I joined the math team, and I started tutoring at the middle school. Avid didn't, Avid taught me an invaluable lesson. We can't rely on others to save us. We must become our own heroes. It helped me rediscover my love for academics and my passion for using my voice to stand up for what I believe in. I now have the tools and powers to use to build a future I envision. I'm full of gratitude and thankful for Ms. Taylor, Ms. Jarrett, and the Avid program. They reminded me of my potential when I had forgotten it. My ultimate dream as a first-generation Mexican-American is to become an engineer, combining my powers of problem-solving and using my voice to advocate on issues that need to be heard. Thanks to Avid, I have the foundation and confidence to take every step towards my dream with power. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Marari, thank you for sharing your story with us. That is, it's wonderful to hear you be able to tell you, tell us that story in your own words. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, you know, wonderful story for you, also wonderful story for the amazing staff that we have that make this program happen and taking advantage of it. I think the thing I took away the most is that you can't wait for somebody else to save you. You have to be your own hero. That is incredibly powerful, and I'm glad that you were able to find that for yourself. And hopefully, people who heard that tonight can find that for themselves as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And boys swim team, thank you for sticking around. Aren't you glad you stuck around? That was worth it. I told you you'd be glad. You can thank me later. All right, we are moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? There was no members of the public that wanted to speak to us this evening. Thank you. Is there any, anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Before we move on to our discussion items, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Dr. Stacy Stanley for her work here in Edina over the past several years. This was posted in the consent agenda, but I think it's really important that we read this to the public and read it out loud. So. Be it resolved that the school board commend and recognize Dr. Stacy Stanley for her service to Edina Public Schools from 2021 to 2025. The board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and that of the staff and residents of the school district for Dr. Stacy Stanley's dedicated leadership and service to the district during her tenure. Dr. Stanley has been a steadfast advocate for the academic success and well-being of each and every Edina Public Schools student. Her leadership has been instrumental in shaping and advancing the district's 2020-2030 strategic plan, ensuring a strong foundation for the future. She has worked tirelessly to develop and implement key initiatives that align with the district's mission, vision, and values. Some highlights of Dr. Stanley's contributions include leading the development of a comprehensive literacy plan to enhance student learning, establishing a robust data metrics plan and dashboard to track and support student progress, engaging various stakeholders, including students, families, staff, and community members to further the district's mission, spearheading the launch of the district's Spanish dual-language program, expanding opportunities for bilingual education, enhancing student enrollment and retention efforts to ensure continued district growth and success, and advocating for sound fiscal management to maintain the district's financial stability and sustainability. Dr. Stanley's leadership, dedication, and vision have left an indelible mark on the district, ensuring that her impact will be felt for years to come. We are deeply grateful for her service and extend our best wishes as she embarks on her next chapter. Thank you. And on behalf of the board, we have a card and a gift that. Okay, we are moving on to our discussion items, and our first item is a food service management contract for the 2025-2026 school year. And I welcome up Mert Woodard, Director of Finance and Operations. And Mert, would you please introduce the two other guests that are with you this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. I am joined tonight with our partners from Chartwell's, our onsite food service director, Abby Dollarshell, as well as the area and regional director, Anya Brubaker. Before I turn it over to Anya and Abby, I'll just make a couple of quick remarks. We're approaching the end of the school year, which for food service means that we'll be looking at extending our food service management contractor arrangement with Chartwell's. As you'll recall, a very robust RFP process was used to select Chartwell's to continue their service to the school district in 2022. They had been partnering with the school district for a number of years prior to that. The result of that RFP process awarded them with a series of one-year agreements for a total of five years. The administration feels very strongly that Chartwell's has performed quite well, particularly financially for the school district. And we would like to formally recommend extending them for their fourth one-year agreement at the subsequent board meeting in May. And I'll just give you a couple of quick statistics to underline the success of the program this school year. As many of you know, free school meals went into effect last school year, and we saw a pretty substantial increase in participation throughout all of our buildings. That has continued this year. 4% increase to reimbursable breakfasts this school year, and then a 3.8% increase to our lunches, the fund balance in the Food Service Fund. As a result of Chartwell's partnership with the district has been very robust. We added about $1 million to our fund balance last school year. We'll add considerable amount to our fund balance this school year. That fund operates without any subsidy from the general fund, which is exactly what you like to see from your food service program. So without further ado, Abby and Anya, do you have anything to add?
Hi, thank you for allowing us to come today. I feel like the, overall, this school year has been a very successful school year. We focused a lot on, we've expanded our Discovery Kitchen program this year. So we have been doing Discovery Kitchens in all of the elementary schools once a month. In this program, we sample a different, like, fruit or vegetable menu, a recipe, and then we, so we sample it one day and then put on the menu the next day to allow kids to try something before they see it on the line and are too scared to take it. So we've had a lot of success in this program. I wish we can plan to continue next year. Right now, we're doing a pretty thorough evaluation of our menus. And one thing we've heard from parents and students is that they want an expansion of vegetarian options. So that's something that, you know, we've heard loud and clear and are working on expanding some of these offerings for next year. Right now, I've been going around to all of the element, or all the schools, and I'm meeting with different student groups, just to kind of get some of this feedback and really try and understand what it is the kids are looking for. And Mert and I meet quarterly with some of the parents as well. So we're getting some really good feedback for what both students and parents are looking for in our programs.
Another program that I've seen successfully rolled out in your district is our Global Eats program, which is Chartwell's food company. We're also looking at expanding beyond the current countries that we currently offer. And, you know, it's part of our program since food is the biggest bonding of cultures. So I'm super excited to continue growing that and expanding that, you know, within your district.
Thanks, Abby and Anya. Again, we'll be bringing this for formal action at our May regular meeting.
Board members, do you have questions?
Director Allenberg.
I was wondering why we're doing one-year contracts as opposed to, since it's been five years of successful one-year contracts, why we aren't extending to two-year or three-year? Because it seems that if there's a track record of success, that it could potentially save time and effort on behalf of both entities.
That's a great question, Director Allenberg. And Anya and Abby can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I believe ultimately USDA regulations, which MDE promulgates in our state, require that after every five years, an RFP process is conducted. And those are just a series of one-year agreements after that five-year vendor has been selected. And so we're just kind of following MDE protocol. And each food service management agreement is kind of just a one-year template agreement. Because each school year, the, the cost per meal that we, you know, are paying Chartwell's to perform does increase based on inflationary measures calculated by the state.
So you'd have to go through this process anyway to figure out the price?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My question, you kind of talked to Abby. You know, I know one of the things that, I appreciated you saying how you're visiting schools and hearing from students, and one of the things that you're working on is more vegetarian options. And also that with our parent group, the quarterly meetings, I think, are great. So keep that up. I think that's a great vehicle for receiving feedback and also helping our parents and our students understand the parameters that we're working within. Because that's sometimes something we hear at the board. Well, every once in a while, we'll get an email about school meals, and it's, and there's some tight parameters that we're working around. So it's, I think that conduit of information both ways is really valuable. So thank you for facilitating that. All right. Well, then that is, we will be in here tonight, and we will look forward to this coming up for action at our May meeting. So, thank you.
All right. Moving on to discuss our policy review. And we have policy 509, 510, 527, 528, 538, and 612. And I'm gonna turn it over to our board's policy chair, Director Allenberg.
Hello. So we have quite a few policies for discussion and action tonight. And we're going to start with policies for. going to start with policies for discussion. Policies 509 and 510, resident enrollment and assignment, and then 510 is open enrollment in both of these. We have Assistant Superintendent Nate Swenson and Director of Communications, Stephanie Edwards up here. First, we're going to talk about policy 509, resident enrollment and assignment. This one had mostly semantic changes, but there were a few sections that were struck through, and I was wondering if one of you could explain why those sections were taken out for the board?
Sure. Thank you. Let's see, the first one was the temporarily living beyond district boundaries. And this was struck because this statement was seen as redundant because we allow students to remain regardless of their grade or temporary living status, remain enrolled in the district. Then if we go down to, let's see, our appendix, we had struck an area that said, students who qualify for educational benefits and meet the district registration choice program deadline annually, the district administration will identify the number of admission slots that will be available. And this was something that we're not able to do in practice. So we struck it from the policy. And I'd say the other change is that when it comes to the choice program specifically for Spanish dual-language, we are maintaining language-specific waitlists. So one waitlist for students who are heritage English speakers, one waitlist for students who are heritage Spanish speakers. And a heritage speaker is a student who acquired Spanish through family, cultural, community contexts, rather than formal education. And we used to merge those waitlists earlier than we're proposing in our current policy. We hope to have a different, better balance of heritage English speakers and heritage Spanish speakers based on the design of the program. So we struck language that after August 1st, openings would be filled from a merged waiting list, and we're going to hold that until closer to the start of the school year.
And to provide clarification for people that might be watching and don't, might not understand how the program is, our Spanish program is a dual immersion program, which is different than our French program, which is a straight immersion program. And so we are trying to create a certain balance of heritage speakers and non-heritage speakers in order to facilitate the dual immersion, which is students learning from each other's languages, which is why that's written into policy.
And then the last change is we have an updated DOP reform that's part of the second appendix.
Thank you. Board members, what questions or comments do you have about the changes and updates to the policy? Chair Gabler?
Thank you, Director Edwards, for talking through those changes. And board book is a little slow loading tonight, so I don't have the exact spot in the policy where this is, but when you added the new language around what constitutes a heritage speaker?
Yes.
I know that sometimes there's questions around like a student who maybe went through a Spanish childcare setting. Are they considered a heritage speaker, or is that not considered community contact or however the verbiage is there?
That would not be considered heritage. Heritage is really, I learned at home, I learned from family, I learned in a cultural context.
Cultural piece, okay.
Yeah.
Because I know that cultural piece is a big part of that, the benefits of that dual that we've talked about. So that makes sense.
That's right.
Okay, that was just a clarity question that I had just for my own benefit, so thank you.
Nothing else? We'll move to policy 510, which is our open enrollment policy. And the two, I would say the two largest changes in this policy, and again, our board book is not updating. So one is there's language that is specifying that a student who is open enrolled in preschool will need to reopen enroll in kindergarten, with the exception of children that are participating in a school readiness or any other kindergarten program eligible for four-year-olds pursuant to state law. And so that's new to this policy. And then the second part is the reordering of priority for open enrollment students. And the, the state has a set of eligibility for open enrollment, but then school boards have the right to order them in order of priority. And so these have been merged and changed a little bit. And so this is based on a work session that we actually already had as a board to discuss this, and it has not changed from the feedback the board gave in that work session. And so from that feedback, we have the currently enrolled K-12 open enrolled students, entered district transfer requests. And then those are, those are already existing students. So then when we're thinking of actual new students coming into the district, it's priority two, which is really the first priority for new students, are staff, any staff requests. So that includes siblings. Before, it used to be broken out between existing, existing students and then siblings. So this is any staff request to open enroll a student. That's priority two. Priority three is siblings of any kind. So then you move down to if you are currently open enrolled for any other reason, then siblings, no matter what you're open enrolled for. That is the next priority. Priority four is student is a resident of the city of Edina. Priority five, and for those that might not know, our district boundaries are not, do not align perfectly with the city of Edina boundary. And so we do have people that live in the city of Edina but aren't part of the Edina School District. Priority five is achievement and integration, non-resident students. And then priority six is open enrollment for anybody else that's not part of any of those other options but have submitted their request prior to January 15th. And then the last one is looking at individuals that haven't met that deadline. And so that was the feedback from our work session, and that's what is built into here. So those are the two significant changes to this policy that have the potential to change things in practice in the district. In reality, from our admissions office, there probably won't be much of a change per se, but it is a change in how the policy is written. Assistant Superintendent Swenson or Director Edwards, do you have any more context or?
That was my favorite policy review ever. I have nothing to add.
Board members, what feedback, comments, questions do you have? Okay.
Oh, I do.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you for, thank you for the work on this, and thank you for bringing this to the work session. I thought that was a really helpful conversation, and since this is a topic that we do get questions about, it was, I thought a really helpful conversation. I had a question in our purpose. So there's a line that says, "The district may also accept non-Minnesota resident students through tuition payment." And I was curious, do we need to clarify that that would only be through EVP? Like, would it be worthwhile? Is that, or would that just be, if that ever would come up, that we could just answer the question, no, you cannot apply to be an Edina student if you live in Iowa unless you're going to do our EVP?
Okay, would also pay tuition.
Okay, so then that, that clarifies my question.
And I think it specifies that below.
There is a mention of who pays tuition. It's like the very last section.
And maybe we should maybe put in parentheses, like, see below.
Well, no, that's okay, because that was my second question, was down at the student tuition fees. I don't know if it does say foreign exchange student because that's news to me. Maybe I didn't read clear enough, but my question about that section was, can you speak to that section? When are we applying those rules? Because that was not clear to me. Like, who would be charged tuition payments?
Just let her be, satisfy it.
Under student tuition?
Yeah. So basically, I believe what that's saying is, you know how we have the enrollment options program referenced and our process for getting students? I believe that this is referring to any student who falls outside of that, which would, I, I think so.
And we can double check. We actually spoke about this because I agree that it's confusing, but we were coming, we were like, who does this count? And we were coming up with like one-off situations where it could be this, it could be that. So we were a little leery to say these two things, because what if there's a really bizarre case that falls out of those two things but would require a tuition payment? But we can certainly take a look at that and try to provide some more clarification around the topic of tuition.
Yeah, that would, and I will defer to the group. You know, in terms of what you, but as I read it, I was still left with the question of who are we charging tuition for? And so knowing that it's, can be EVP students, it can be foreign exchange students, maybe putting that in there and, and like we have in other policies where it's, it kind of leaves it open-ended and additional, if the committee seems like that would help, would the reader kind of clarify? Because I was not sure as I read, but I know you guys will to figure it out. So those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Edwards. We're going to move on to policy 527, student, student use parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspection searches. And again, Assistant Superintendent Nate Swenson. And the change to this is adding in the language, use of vehicle immobilization devices to add that into policy, so it's clear in policy that those could potentially be used in the parking lot. Director Swenson, or Assistant Superintendent Swenson?
Yeah, that is the main change to this policy is we, we do this in practice, but it has just not been in policy before. And so we wanted to make sure that the policy reflects what we're actually doing.
Questions, comments? Okay.
I have a question.
Oh.
Sorry.
You're like, I turn to this side, and then when I don't see.
This is reversed.
You need to be faster.
Remember how often you ask me questions?
Can I just recommend one thing really quick? You two should just be on the policy committee and not have this back and forth when, when you're both not on it at the same time, just point of clarification.
You guys would miss out on all this banter. That would be sad.
Can you just, and I, for anybody viewing and for the board, can you speak to who reviewed this policy from the high school in terms of like how this is working in practice? You referenced it there, but can you speak to that?
Yeah, so this was actually reviewed by all principals, and, but most importantly, it was reviewed by Alex Hatstrom. And, and Alex works really closely with the security staff at the high school, who in large part enforced the policy with the help of the administration too. And so, in fact, he is working with the high school staff around this particular policy right now.
And then I had one clarification question down under, it's in appendix two, as far as the, and, and I think I had some questions just because this has been a while since this one was reviewed, and obviously our parking lot is a topic we talk about a lot. Where it says there will be, it's about halfway down the page after the list of the priorities, it says there will be no lot assignments, all students may park in the lot of their choice. I don't think that's correct, is it? I think you're assigned to a lot, right? You guys don't have high schools.
I don't know that for certain, but I.
Are you talking about like the church lots versus the regular lot?
Like, you can't park in the main lot if you, because we just changed that, less this year where you're paying a certain amount to park in the main lot. So that is, there are lots that are assigned.
Yeah, I think that's referring to like lots at the school, but I agree that should be clarified because you do pay a different fee to park at the church.
Okay, so that might be an area to kind of take a peek at.
I will get clarity and I'll change it.
Yep.
And then just out of curiosity, when a student signs up to get a parking permit, do they have to sign this or sign anything that kind of says, I've been alerted that these are the expectations and privileges that come along with a, yeah?
That, that's a really good question. I do not know that answer.
They do, and the parent has to sign off on it.
Okay.
Are you, would you, are you suggesting that maybe that has to be referenced in this policy as part of that? If that's the case?
Maybe, maybe. I think, you know, again, I'm just, our parking lots are a topic we talk about a lot, and I know the high school has been working really hard this year and probably previous years too, just to get a hold of safety in our parking lots and, and kind of how this, how that's all going to run. And so I was just curious how this information that we've spent a lot of time in policy talking about, how that's getting pushed out to students and families?
Yep, there's specific stuff in the handbook which would reference the policy. Yeah.
Right, that was it for me. Thank you.
Can I just point a clarification? Are you wanting handbook language in, in the policy as well related to your question around parent role, kind of procedures?
No, it was more of a process. I think, you know, I, like, how is this information disseminated? And now that Board Member Allenberg mentioned it, I think I remember seeing a table at the high school where you, when you do get your parking pass, you have to sign that basically you've read. Like, you're making a commitment to like, yes, I've read these rules and should I not follow them? Okay. No, so to answer your question.
Okay. So just one last thing, I will get clarity on the lot assignments part and revise it accordingly.
Thank you. And I, and I also referenced that this policy hasn't been looked at for a while, so that's, you know, natural that we're going to have some changes.
I just looked it up. Church is 150 versus 450 for the others, so they're two different things.
Anything else on 527? Okay, we're going to move on to 528, which is student parental family and marital status nondiscrimination. And Executive Director of Human Resources, Sonia Saylor. I believe the only change in this was adding the correct contact name and a few semantic changes.
That is correct, Director Allenberg. So policy 528 protects students from discrimination based on sex and marital status, and specifically around the topic of discrimination based on pregnancy. The, all of the changes followed along with MSBA, no substantive changes. The only real change was in section two. The only real change was in um section two, paragraph C. Policy Committee made the decision to remove the word "normal", because it could be perceived as a potential exclusionary meaning for using that word. And then including uh small, some small modifications on the form that's attached to this policy to be more inclusionary regarding primary and secondary um home addresses and telephone numbers. And those were the only changes. Any questions?
Director Barry?
I was just wondering if the report form lives anywhere else that might be more easily accessible? Or if it gets used?
Lives anywhere else than on the website?
Yes, or if there's, I guess, notice to students where they could find such a form? Or just awareness that it exists?
The, I would assume that it is in the handbook um at the building level. I'm not sure if they provide it anywhere else other than that. One conversation that we had with Policy Committee, these, when, so the same form is used for students and employees. Employ, um typically, when we see this form, it's employees. Employees that have actually completed this form. And it's used, of course, for multiple different policies as well. When a student would bring forward this type of concern, it's more likely it's going to go directly to the administration through a verbal report, through a counselor, through a social worker, through a verbal report. Again, these are also very rare, um, rare concerns as well. The forms are there in case um a parent or a student or an employee would like to use the form. But they're honestly not used all that commonly. Even even with employees, and this particular policy is not geared at employees, but that form is geared at employees for other policies. Even employees often don't utilize that form. They reach out to us in different ways to have those conversations. But it's a good question as to whether that form is somewhere other than on the school website under this board policy. I would assume there is something in the student handbook that that refers to where to make these types, you know, bring these types of concerns. But I'm not sure about the actual form.
I think it's a good question that we can follow up on. To your point, if people are having issues, making sure it's easily accessi- accessible, what is the process? And if we need a form, if we should go to administration, how do we do that as a family or student?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're going to move on to, thank you. Thank you, Director Saylor. We're going to move on to um policy 538. And we have Assistant um Director of Teaching and Learning, Bethany Van Oostel here. There were no um material changes to this policy, but a lot of um grammar and semantic updates to this. Uh, Director Van Oostel, are there any comments that you'd like to make about the policy?
No, minimal changes, as you said, to this policy. Jody DeStain Hubert worked on this with Jen Carter and Pam Burling to make just minor adjustments. There was an application added in the appendix, and that was really about all of the changes made to this policy.
Board members, do you have questions? Chair Gabler?
Yes, can you, I know we've talked about this policy a number of times in the last several years. I saw the reference of insurance. And can you remind me, the discussion centered around it strongly, we're now strongly recommending that people take the insurance, we're not requiring them. Is that correct?
Okay, all right. That was a yes for strong recommendation. In case people did not see my head bobbing. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, and last but not least, we have policy 612, uh, development of parental involvement policies for Title I programs. And we have, um, again, our Assistant um Director of Teaching and Learning. And this policy, the point of this policy is really to encourage and facilitate involvement by parents and guardians for students that are participating in Title I programming. And this policy was updated to be consistent with our language and other policies that are similar and with um MSBA model policy. Anything else you'd like to?
No, truly, those were the only, um, a minor punctuation added. And yeah, just uh wording changes that align now with MSBA. And um, yeah, that's really very minor changes.
Questions? Okay, um, thank you, everyone. I have a couple of notes of feedback for our policy committee, and that is all for our discussion items.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 budget revision? Is there a second?
Second.
Mertz, we're going to welcome up Mert Woodard, our Director of Finance and Operation, and he will present for us about this item. Welcome.
Chair Gabler, members of the school board. The administration tonight is seeking formal approval of its recommended budget revisions for the current year or fiscal year 2025 budget, which were first reviewed um at the January Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, subsequently reviewed at the February Boardwork Session and March Regular Meeting. There have been no changes to any of those proposed revisions throughout that time. So tonight, we're seeking formal approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to go through those. Otherwise, the recommended action is before you.
Board members, any questions?
I have one. Not so much that I'm concerned about the revised budget for fiscal year 2025. I know that's what the action's for. But as it's, we have a revised five-year general fund forecast that goes forward from that standpoint. And not that we need to get into it a lot tonight, because this is just a call for action. But given what the state's doing, but also what's happened with the federal government, I'm just wanting to ask you, for the public, what considerations, as we look past the end of the 25 period, as we begin to 26 and beyond, are there any specific things that you're more concerned with now in the last two months than we were when we were first discussing what those forecasts might look like going out for the five years?
Hey, great question, Director Burman. I'll start with the forecast revision. So the forecast is actually more favorable now as a result of our fiscal year 2025 activity, particularly enrollment coming in a little bit stronger than expected, which is fantastic. Also, the Commission of Education has recently announced that um the inflationary um increase to the state aid formula is going to be 2.74% rather than 2.5% or so that we were planning for, which is great. That's very short-term positive news, though. Out in the further years, the uncertainty regarding federal funds is absolutely something that we're looking for. It's, um, you know, 1.5% of our general fund budget, which to the layperson seems like a small number, but that's, you know, upwards of $2 million overall. More than 1.5 million of that directed towards special education. So were we to, you know, lose those funds, that would only then go to increase our cross subsidy, which would have drastic ramifications, perhaps not as much only in Edina, but statewide. You know, the state's coffers would then be dramatically reduced. One of the reasons the state forecast is not as favorable as it was once was was due to that additional funding for special education and and all sorts of other things that were promoted in 2023. So there's just numerous trickle-down effects. Edina does not um receive as much federal funding as some of our neighbors. However, if those school districts were to receive fewer federal funds, would the state then um have to dig into their um general fund budget to then um mitigate the impacts to those districts? Would that cause lesser funds for Edina? There's just so many different, um, you know, mechanics that are ongoing that are uncertain. So I think it's prudent that we're continuing to be conservative. We're not adding a lot of new positions. In fact, we're not really adding any positions versus this year. We're continuing to be conservative with our our revenue assumptions, which I think is, you know, kind of the only thing that we can do at this point. And we're hoping for good news. Additionally, in it, um, on top of some of the socioeconomic debates that are happening at at the federal level, there's also the economic macroeconomic um conversations regarding tariffs. And all of those are very inflationary in nature, upwards in inflation. The the labor market does not get any looser. It's continuing to be very tight, particularly with teachers. That creates upward pressure on wages, so everything appears to be getting more expensive as time goes on, at least in the short term. So that's something that we're definitely keeping an eye on.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, we will now vote to approve the fiscal year 25 budget revision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The fiscal year 25 budget revision is approved. Thank you, Director Woodard. Uh, I'm now going to turn it back to Policy Chair Allenberg to tell us about our rapid review policies for this evening, which are 413 and 705. Oh, uh, we, uh, we will now vote to approve policies 413 and 705. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
Do I have a motion?
Yep, we just voted to.
No, 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 you need to have a motion for the, Yuri took care of Mert. We're now need a motion to take action on the policy.
Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, everybody. Do I have a motion to approve policies 413 and 705?
So moved.
Second.
Policy Chair Allenberg, please tell us about these policies that are up for rapid review.
Sorry, I just. I was swallowing a pill right when you turned it over to me. I apologize. So rapid review is part of our um Policy Committee policy that if there's very few changes to a policy, it goes directly from committee to action. And these two policies are part of that. We have policy 413, um, Director of Student Services, Jody Remzing. You probably don't have to come around, but just in case, she's over there. This policy was updated with um the revised definition of familial familial status. And these updates reflect um the new um definition from the Minnesota Legislature and are consistent with the language that the board approved in policy 521 in March. So it mirrors that language. Questions about policy 413? Okay, and then um policy 705 is development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. And there, it's a super short policy. There is one change, which actually added in the limits of the uniform financial accounting and reporting standards. So it specified what those limits are, and that's the only change to that policy. Questions about policy 705? Okay.
All right, uh, great, we will now vote to approve policies 413 and 705. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 413 and 705 are approved. Do I have a motion to approve policies 517, 519, 534, and 535? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Policy Chair Allenberg, is there anything you want to mention about these policies from, that we were reviewed last month?
There are no um changes to these since last month. I don't believe so, unless Assistant Superintendent Swenson, they're same. Yes. Okay, I just wanted to verify. So unless there are questions or comments, um, I have nothing further to add.
All right, we will now vote to approve policies 517, 519, 534, 535. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 517, 519, 534, 535 are approved. We're moving on to our leadership and committee updates. Board members, uh, do you have any leadership or committee updates for the public or for the general board? Director Arum?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the community members and students and staff who joined us at the Legislative Day at the Capitol um last month. We had a great group of about 30 people who went down, 21 students. We were able to have an opportunity to speak with uh the head of the Education Finance Committee and the House side, both the Republican and Democratic co-chairs. So we had a significant amount of time with them. We met with um some of the local lobbyists as well, and then had an opportunity to hear some Edina families testify at the Senate Education Policy Committee meetings. And so I think it was a great day for us to kind of get some exposure with uh legislators. And um, again, more legislative action to advocate for what's important to us and our legislative platform for the remainder of this session, which um has a lot of stuff uh going on right now. And um hopefully, it'll all be wrapped up by May, but there might be further opportunities where we need our community to advocate for Edina. So um hopefully, that'll be in the next six weeks or so.
Thanks.
And I want to thank uh Board Member Barry and Board Member Arum for their work on our Legislative Action Committee. They read, they lead a dynamic group of students, and it is always impressive. And whenever they're at the state Capitol, um, people notice, because we bring a lot of students along. And um, and we have sharp students, they ask some really excellent questions. So thank you for your leadership in those roles. Any other board updates? All right, Dr. Stanley, do you have any updates that you would like to share?
I have a couple. First of all, we have new artwork up in the boardroom. Hopefully, you've noticed that. And the the displays presented by Edina High School. This mixed collection of work showcases the talents of students from all of the 17 different art courses offered at Edina High School in grades nine through 12. I want to say that again. We have 17 different art courses offered at Edina High School. Because of this, numerous project, uh, types are on display. The Level One works show foundational skill building with traditional materials like charcoal, ink, pencil, paint, silver, gelatin, uh, silver gelatin prints, and clay, as well as digital art created with Adobe Photoshop and Illustrator. Advanced and AP studio works, um, in all of the content areas are idea-based works, which are created using individual student themes. Like all artistic endeavors, these works will show uh planning, experimentation, and revision of materials and ideas to match with the artist's purpose. These works emphasize not only technical mastery, but student voices and ideas. I had a chance to come in and look through them earlier today, and they are outstanding. And so um, if you haven't had a chance, um, please take time to look at them. The art tier, art teachers from Edina High School who have organized this display are Kim Raskin, Delon Towne, and George Lundgren. Bravo to them.
Can I just say that AI has nothing on Edina High School art students and teachers? Thank you.
That's right. Thanks, Director Burman. Um, the final thing that I will say um to the community is it has been an honor to serve uh as your superintendent for the past four years. I am incredibly proud of just the work that teachers did, students did, as we really worked to um come out of the impact of the pandemic. The dedication was immeasurable. And uh the other thing that I'd like to say is I'm just so proud of my team who have come on, uh, most of them, honestly, just within the past four years. And I could not be more proud of them for the work that they have done to ensure that um Edina Public Schools truly defines excellence and um sets us in a place where uh we are standout. Finally, it has been a pleasure to serve at the pleasure of the board and to work with you for the, um, some of you for two years, some of you for three years, some of you for four years. So um, thank you to the community, uh, just an honor and appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will vote to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed, and the meeting is adjourned.